Good evening and welcome to the November 19, 2014 Board of Education meeting. We have been in an executive session since 5:30 to discuss a potential district litigation and individual employment matter. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any PIG students here tonight? Participation in government students? Okay, a few of you. Your requirement is that you stay till 9 o'clock. If the meeting is still going on at 9, we'll take a break and you'll need to come up and sign out. And if you have any papers that the Board of Ed members need to sign, we can do that for you. If we are done before 9, you'll just come up at that time and sign out. Introductions.
Diane Seaver.
Joanne Cunningham.
Jody Monroe.
Tom Douglas.
Matt Downey.
Charmaine Boudisinger.
Michael Cooper.
Lynn Lenhart.
Judy Keough.
And Christine Beck is out attending a field trip with her daughter tonight. Approval of the minutes, the minutes of the November 5, 2014 Regular Board Meeting?
Some move.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Next is a Student Senate report. Do we have a representative from Student Senate? Great.
Hello, my name is Chelsea Cato and I'm the President of Student Senate. The week of November 3, we hosted Dodgeball and that was very successful. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend because I was making up work after being absent from school for a week. On November 12, we attended the Suburban Council Leadership Conference and that was very interesting. Before we attended, we had to fill out a survey and it told us what spirit animal we were and like what leadership qualities each animal had. So when we attended the conference, we were broken up into groups by our animal and we just talked about the qualities of leaders and how to improve leadership activities throughout our school and get students participated in all those things. And in two years, Bethlem will have to host the Leadership Conference in 2016, so we have to start planning and getting the current sophomores ready for 2016. On Wednesday, we also hosted a donation for the GI Go Fund. Unfortunately, our plan with the American Legion didn't go through, but we would like to continue that and schedule it for another time because I think it's important that students understand what's going on with veterans and like how important they are to our society. Between the faculty and students, we raised $250 in one day, so we were very happy with that. This Sunday through Tuesday, Student Senate is attending the New York State Council on Leadership and Student Activities. We're very excited. We were sent certain things to prepare for this conference. We have to make a movie poster board about our school, including our mascot and a name and just like it's supposed to represent our school in different ways. And then there's a contest and then we get to meet with students from throughout New York State and get to learn about what goes on in their schools and different things that we can implement in our school and also things that they implement that are good. Our Innovation Room is open for general use. The technology has not been installed, but we didn't want to waste the space so students can sign it out and just do group projects on it ahead of time. And if they need it that period and it's open, they just have to speak with Ms. Brown, the librarian, to use it and then if she thinks it's okay, she'll allow that. We're currently working on the food drive with the Counseling Center. We distributed boxes to all the different homerooms today after school and we'll collect all the food and sort it on December 12. This year, instead of just doing one box per homeroom, we're doing as many boxes as possible to improve the amount of numbers because a lot of families are in need this year compared to last year, so we want to make sure we have enough food for everyone. Today, we had a meeting and I thought it was very beneficial because we discussed the different problems that are going on in our school. I know that bullying was brought up at one of the meetings and we're trying to think of different ways we can address that because we're supposed to be the voice of the student body and if we didn't know that was going on, that's a negative for us. So we were talking about different ways we can have like open forums for students to feel comfortable to speak to Student Senate and the administration and to provide different activities that aren't cliche activities because we want students to actually get something out of it. We don't want them to just say, "Oh, like that's another bullying activity or that's another activity that they're doing in school," like mandating us. So we were thinking that once a month, we could have an open forum with the high school administration and a few students from Student Senate and students would be allowed to voice their concerns and hear the feedback from the administration and then Student Senate and the administration would work behind the scenes to fix that. And we're meeting with Mr. Landry when we return from break to discuss other possibilities and other meetings and we think it's just very important that we address it as students. And it was just very troubling that we did not know that that was going on. So that's what's going on for now. And that next meeting, we'll have the definite plan of what we're going to do to address that after we meet with Mr. Landry.
Great. Thank you for a great report and thank you for taking that initiative on the bullying issue.
Thank you.
I know that was a concern for the entire board here. That's great. And I have a couple of questions. On the, where's the training going to be that the next leadership one that you're going to? And then what did you feel you learned from that first one that the group went to?
The one that starts on Sunday is at the Hilton Hotel in Albany. And I, that one, since it's in the entire New York State, I think we'll just focus on like our different areas and like the differences and getting to know students and how to understand different students from different places. The last one, I thought it was just very interesting how similar our schools are in the Suburban Council even though there's always sports rivalries and all those little things. And I thought that it was great to be able to meet with other students and talk about what's going on in their school and they gave us fundraising ideas. They also gave us ideas on how they address their Student Senate. Some of their senates are different where they have a group of students that are elected, but then they also have a group of students that can just join and they have separate meetings. So they'll have the elected meetings and then they'll have just students who are interested in learning about the different problems, so that was interesting. Some of their groups are about 100 students and some of them are a lot smaller like ours. But some schools, they combine their Student Council and Student Senate, so it was just interesting to hear the differences. And with the leadership activities, I thought they were very beneficial. One activity is they had us build our own school and they gave each school money and we had to figure out ways to get different things in our school. And each school represented a different part of our state. So one school was underfunded, one school was overfunded, and we had to figure out which school was which. And in order to go and meet with the superintendent and the principals, we had to have an escort. So you'd have to request your escort and then you have to say what you needed the library for and why it'd be beneficial before you could get it. And there was also detention if you didn't follow the rules, if you didn't get an escort or if you didn't explain yourself well enough. So I just thought it was a very interesting and fulfilling experience and I think that we should have a conference just as good as theirs in two years.
Great, great. Any other board members?
You said something about the 2016 conference.
Yes.
Being hosted. Which, is that the regional one?
That is the Suburban Council Leadership Conference.
Okay. Just if you need funds for that, be sure to be planning for that. I'm not sure if it's coming out of SGA funds or if the district needs to just.
We'll locate it.
Okay. So that's just a heads up on money. And the open forum, I think, is a great idea. Would that, do you have a sense if that would happen during the school day or after school? I realize you're still planning it.
Yeah, we would like it to happen after school in D122, which is the larger theater style room, so then the students could access it easier. If it's at night, some students may have sports and they might not have pride, so if it's immediately after school and there would be late buses provided, it'd be accessible for everyone.
Great thinking. But I think, can I just add something to that? If students are having issues, though, they shouldn't wait till that once a month forum to be able to say anything.
Oh, no.
They should be encouraged to speak to an administrator or counselor, teacher or whomever, you know, about a situation so that it can be resolved.
I agree. Today, we discussed with our students that since we have representatives from each grade, they should be looking within each grade for different problems and be talking to students like what do you want us to improve on? And they need to feel comfortable with our representatives. And some students said they didn't know who our representatives were. We used to have a Student Senate Board, we still do, but we put our pictures up and names and unfortunately, it was, our pictures were ripped down by students or other students drew on them. So today, Mr. Irons said that we can put our pictures and names enclosed on the board so no one can write on it or disrupt them and then everyone would know who they can talk to to voice their opinions.
Yeah, Joanne.
I think it's great that you're doing that. I was going to ask you after last meeting what really, what the response was of the Student Senate, so I'm glad that you guys took it seriously because I do think that I totally agree with you. You guys are the leaders of the school and this is a real opportunity area for you guys to do something that's meaningful and that's big and that fixes a problem that is obviously a problem. So I appreciate that. I guess I would encourage you to figure out how you can pull kids into that effort to help you as leaders who might not be, you know, called upon to do a leadership activity like that. I mean, maybe there's a way for you guys to branch out a little bit and figure out how you can engage a wider audience and, you know, and think bold. I mean, establish, you know, a zero tolerance policy and mean it. And who knows, maybe in two years, when you're hosting it, the Student Senate, Suburban Council event, maybe your big initiative that is going to put you on the map is going to be an anti-bullying, you know, project. So, I mean, dream big because it's a big problem, but, you know, great minds can think big solutions, so, but good job.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you again.
Thank you.
Great report. Next, we'll have the Superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you, President Downey, members of the board. The past couple of weeks, there's been a lot going on in the district. We'd like to give our best wishes to our swimming and diving competitors who will be heading off tomorrow to the New York State Swimming and Diving Championships in Ithaca. We'll be waiting for the outcome of those meets over the weekend. Also, we'd like to take some time at the next meeting to congratulate our boys volleyball program and girls soccer programs for their outstanding season as well as their competition at the state championships and their sectional championships. So they will be coming out at our next meeting along with six of our Division I signees for the latest round of NCAA signing commitments that happened just earlier this week. So we'll be bringing them to the next board meeting. Also, one of the things I'd like the board to recognize is that yesterday was School Related Professionals Day. One of the things that often goes unnoticed is a lot of the work that happens not only in the classroom but behind the scenes to make sure that the classrooms can properly go through their educational day to the best way possible for all of our students. Therefore, I'd like the board just to put on notice in the minutes that we recognize all of our school-related professional professionals and professionals throughout the district for all their work that they do to make Bethlehem Central the school district that it is and I want to thank them for their service. To follow up on a couple issues from previous board meetings, we talked about the National Grid request of a power station, substation proposal just off the end of the Route 32 bypass in Van Dyke. We mentioned that because tomorrow, seeing how we have been served notice that this is going before the Zoning Board of Appeal and that it has the potential of impacting the Eagle Elementary School as well as the high school, which with the high school being the one place that every student in the district will at one time or another attend, that we should be sending out an SNN notification informing the community that although the board does not have any final say in the ultimate determination of that appeal process, that we provide them with the information and the time, date and location of the next zoning Board of Appeals. So if any parent or community member has any issues, concerns, support or opposition to the proposal, that they make their voices known at the ZBA and I would just like to make sure that the board is okay with that as well as whether the board would like me to attend to state the board's position either for or against the current location and then ask whether or not other alternatives have been there. So I'll come back to that in just a minute so that the board can just think about that. The other thing is that we will be having a presentation a little bit later tonight on the Veterans Tax Exemption. That's just presentation format with the potential of the public hearing for comments at the next board meeting. But also at the next board meeting, we will be having a presentation done by Ms. Keough in regards to the potential land conservation easement proposed by the town of Bethlehem. Because that is something that's very important to the town, the town has requested that they also give a presentation. I need to know specifically if the board wishes for two presentations on that night as Mr. Clarkson would like as our town supervisor to address the board, but we may want to limit the amount of time because it's also the night that is scheduled for a public hearing on the conservation easement as well. It could be a lengthy meeting, but my thoughts are that if the board is okay with an outside agency, especially the town, giving a presentation, that maybe they take the first 10 minutes and then Judy will take the second 10 minutes of a 20-minute presentation on the issue with Judy providing the board with the facts of the financials from the district's perspective. Does that sound okay and then have both public hearings on that night?
Sure.
Okay. And then last but not least, I believe, is just to follow up to something that Chelsea has already stated as well as our questions from our last meeting in regards to bullying in our schools. This is an issue that goes across any school district boundary line. It goes across especially the internet boundary line. But I know I, as a response to the board's inquiries at our last meeting, Mr. Landry has at this point provided at least just in document form, some issues and items that the high school is doing to address it as well as what they've done as well as their procedure. That does not preclude a future discussion, but I think we also need to have that as well from the middle school in their context, not just from the high school. And then maybe set a date in January potentially for a presentation from both of the principals at our secondary locations so that the board can have any questions as well as they work as they do diligently every day in regards to this issue. Would that be okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we'll schedule that for after the holiday and that also gives them some time. Also, if you have any questions, please forward them to me and I'll make sure they get to the appropriate source. So that's it for me and then I want to turn it over right after the National Grid to our host school for their presentation on RT, our response to intervention. How does the board feel now that you've had a little time to digest the National Grid proposal off of Van Dyke?
Mike?
I will say that I'm very uncomfortable with putting it in that area. I understand that they bought the land quite a while ago with the idea of building it at some future time, but that area has changed since they bought the land. We now have Eagle Elementary right near where they are planning to put it in and I have some severe health concerns about positioning a major substation that close to a school. So I'm in favor of them trying to find an alternate location.
I agree and I think there should be some alternate locations. I mean, they said that they were having part of it being saved for Vista Development. Well, there's a lot of land over by the Vista Development. It seems like they could purchase some land over there and put a substation if they wanted a brand new substation. Wouldn't be near any school or major developments, housing developments, so it seems like there should be alternatives or they want to close down some of their present substations. Well, maybe they could just improve on one of them if there's enough land.
Because they are already located there.
Because they're already located. I mean, they already have the, you know, proper, you know, they don't need a variance in order to do anything on those. It just seems like there has to be a better way to have this both close to two schools, baseball fields. I mean, there's just an awful lot right there because I think all the Little League play down on Line Drive. Again, that's very close to where this would be located. I just think for safety reasons, health reasons, there should be another alternative. So I'm against having it there. I think there's a substation right near the Line Drive. Isn't there? There is one. But I think, I think that they should explore alternatives. So I should not, I'm not in favor of being, putting the school board's support behind it.
I agree. I think pretty much the last place you could want to build it is right by two schools. So, and Eagle, it's within a couple hundred yards of Eagle. I just think it's utterly ridiculous.
Right, I also agree that there's enough open space, there seems to be throughout the town that, you know, and Lynn, your mention of the Vista Tech Park, I think would be a good location for them to build something like that without impacting the entire community in our school district. So I would say as a board, I think we're all in favor. We would not support the location of a substation as proposed right now.
And if the board doesn't mind, I'll reach out just to Christine to at least, so that if anything, you're on the record and I'd bring that back. But the reason why I have to ask this is the next meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals is on our next Board of Education meeting and because it could be potentially two public hearings, I really feel it's wise that Judy stays back because of the financial implications of that and that the board sends me as a representative at the appropriate time to lend sort of credence and weight to the discussion from the board. And as long as you authorize me, I'll end up taking care of that and make sure the town is aware.
And I would definitely say we send out an SSN to the whole district residents encouraging them to make their feelings known about it also.
And the town had indicated that there are two public hearings scheduled for that night. There's one scheduled right at 7, which they estimated would go perhaps 20 to 30 minutes. So we would be the second, or that proposal would be the second item on their hearing agenda.
Which will probably go a lot longer.
The good part is we're very close, so I know somebody will text me and say we're up, so hopefully we can do time. Maybe we'll get lucky and have a very short December meeting, but I highly doubt it.
The other thing I would say for all the PIG students who need credits, that would be a great meeting for you guys to go to and share that with your fellow students because it.
It won't be boring.
It won't be boring. It's also something that has a very tangible effect on students, so I would encourage you, skip this meeting next two weeks and go to that meeting.
Bringing that up, though, I do have some now concerns thinking that, and we may have very, a lot of people in the community who would want to attend that meeting and also attend our public meeting, a public hearing on our proposed exemptions, which would impact every resident in the district.
Right.
So do we maybe postpone our public hearing?
That would be a good thing.
Ours, because I think we need to make sure we get, we hear from the public. I don't want to split the public between two meetings. Do you support or are against, you know, the proposed substation versus the, you know, easement and the veterans exemption, which are two very important items that we need to spend a considerable amount of time discussing and having public input on that.
How would the board feel that we're doing the veterans' presentation tonight? And we've slated the public hearing for the 3rd, but we could do the veterans' presentation tonight, the conservation easement on the 3rd, and the 15th will then be, the 19th would then be a long night because that will be, I think, two presentations, one in Social Studies as well as one of the high school programs on that night, Lab School, that we have the public hearing that night. We may want to open the meeting even earlier so that you can set a direct, maybe half hour to an hour for the public meeting prior to your board meeting or would you think that would be better?
Is there a timeline on the, when we'd have to act on?
We can't, I talked to Supervisor Clarkson today, although he'd prefer it to be one night, that way we're all only out one night, but he'd prefer by the December, if we went into January, that should not be a, pose a problem.
And with veterans exemption too? I thought there was a date.
With both exemptions, we should be fine. Even if we held the public hearing for one item only, say the veterans on December and then the conservation easement on January, you could make your decisions at that point.
Can you move this, one of those presentations, maybe the social studies one, off? I mean, it sounds like we have a Lab School, Social Studies and then a public hearing. That's going to be a lot.
Yeah, that's a visitation to a school. That's why the social studies presentation is there.
Meaning, I'm sure.
Because it's the second meeting of the month, that would be a visitation. So I think we'd be going to, is it Hammergrill?
We would be visiting Hammergrill.
No, I'm just saying, can you take the social studies content off?
Could we maybe move the Hammergrill meeting to?
Oh, it's the Hammergrill content. I get it, I'm sorry.
I don't know. I hate to put you on the spot, Dave, but would it be a problem if we moved the Hammergrill meeting to the first one in January and you did the presentation then?
No.
Okay.
That sounds like then it would be all at the high school. So I'll set the schedule tomorrow and then we'll make sure we clearly, Jo Allen's here, clearly delineate that. So we'll do presentation tonight, presentation at the next meeting, public hearing on the 19th for both. And then any action on either will come at the January, I think it's January 5?
7.
January 7?
And the 17th of December. It's the December meeting.
Okay, December 17. But January, what's the meeting date for?
7.
January 7, then we would make final decisions on both. Would that be okay?
Okay, so we would go to Hammergrill on January 7 instead of the December.
Instead of the high school.
In January and then December, we're at the high school for both.
Yes. Yeah, we'll put all that together now.
Well, we just have to make sure the community understands that. And I just asked Mrs. Barr to continually remind board members where we're going on what day and at what time. There's a lot, I mean, there's a lot of shifting and.
Yeah, there's some shifting. I think it's, I do believe the shifting is in the best interest.
Yes, I agree.
Of the public and the boards to be able to get the most accurate information that's out.
Okay, just make sure we do.
Well, and to have the public participation in both meetings, I think is crucial.
Okay. Well, then I have everything I need at this time. I'd like to turn it over to our host.
Well, before we go there, Tom, on your presentation, you had mentioned about we have some athletes in, going on to the swimming and diving.
Yes.
At the States. And I know we received an email today about questioning.
Oh.
Paying for coaches overnight stays. I know that came up as an issue either last year or a year before to us. What was, why is it that we don't or is it that they're not there as an official coach because of the way it works? If you can explain that.
What it is, is the question I wish would have been directed to the AD because it was very simply taken care of. It's a section issue. The section did not get notification that a second coach would go and be a chaperone, so they will only pay for a coach that is being a chaperone and the number of students that a school district is sending basically dictates how many chaperones will be paid for. In this situation, because we actually have two parts to our swimming and diving team, we actually have one part of the swim team that's going to States and one diver that's going to States. Well, the swim team, we would have a total of five, which means you would get one coach to go. We are asking the section to look at that a little differently because if we were sending one student for, say, cross-country to the States, our coach would go and they would have to pay for that coach. Why wouldn't it hold true with like swimming and diving? No matter what, we've rectified it. We'll cover that cost one way or another because it's the right thing to do, but we're also looking at it with the section because we feel that they need to cover the costs of anybody that's qualified for that event. And on top of it, if they were all just swimmers from the main swim portion, yes, one coach probably would have been appropriate, but when you have two separate distinct parts of a team going, each coach for that specific part should be allowed the opportunity to coach their students at the state level. Just the section has a different view of it, so we're taking care of that at this point.
Anyone else have any questions for Tom on his report?
Okay. Great, now we can go on to.
I'd like to turn it over to our Slingerlands Elementary School principal, Ms. Heidi Bonakis.
I'm Heidi Bonakis, the principal here at Slingerlands. I'd like to welcome all of you to Slingerlands Elementary School tonight. I'm thrilled to see so many familiar faces in the audience, including Chelsea, who is just reminiscing how she climbed the cargo net when she was a student here, just a few years ago, right, Chelsea? I'd like to introduce the team who is here with me tonight. We're here tonight to talk about RTI, or Response to Intervention, and this is part of our RTI team here at Slingerlands. Dr. Kathleen McAvoy, who is the school psychologist, she splits her time between Slingerlands and Glenmont. Jackie Gaffney is our social worker who is here full-time and Kim McColl is our reading specialist who is also here. our reading specialist who is also here full-time. We also, as part of our RTI team, we also have Cindy McCallum, who is our math specialist, who is actually here in the audience tonight. And we have Jen Steele, who is another reading specialist that we have. Kathleen is going to begin by defining what RTI is for you.
Okay. So, RTI is a systematic and proactive way of screening and providing high-quality instruction to students who are at risk of learning difficulties. It closes the achievement gaps for all students, and it occurs prior to the referral for special education. And really, it's truly intended to decrease the number of special education referrals by giving the students the intense proactive and intervention and instruction right where their areas of need are. It really is, and I think this is the biggest take-home that I want you to, to take with you, is that it's a multi-tier prevention system that's provided when students first show the signs of struggling. Here's a nice graphic representation of what RTI really looks like. The green area is the area that is the primary instruction, and that's where the majority of our students are. That's the instruction that's given by the classroom teacher and what we would consider general education. As we move up the triangle, the yellow and the red areas, that's the instruction that's provided by the RTI teacher. As you go higher up into the triangle, that's where our most intense intervention is. And naturally, just as with any triangle, you would see less students up in this area. Also, the triangle is, is built so that there's ways to move up and down. So, as we see that a student is making improvements, there's opportunities to move back down as well. RTI includes collecting data on all students in order to identify those who are at risk, monitor their progress, and provide appropriate interventions to increase their learning. It's really based on providing the students with scientifically-based instruction, providing them with targeted intervention and differentiated instruction, you know, based on the tier and with evidence-based interventions. We also use a multidisciplinary approach. So, we have lots of different providers within the school, taking a look at each of the unique learning style and needs of the students and providing services within that area. And here in our district, we apply it to reading, math, and to behavior.
Thank you. Our RTI process is a cyclical approach, one that is a process that we use in all of our buildings, and we have a very similar approach across the elementary schools. It's a process that we do three times a year. We begin with our benchmarking in October, again in January, and we finish the cycle towards the end of May. Kathleen is going to begin by talking about our benchmarking assessments.
So, some of the benchmarking assessments that we use to determine what types of services, what level of intervention the students are going to be receiving are here in front of you. First, we have the AIMS Web, which is a quick snapshot that gives us an indication of where the student is doing. It looks at their reading skills and in their math skills. It's a nationally-normed assessment that gives us, really, like I said, it almost gives us a temperature, you know, where we really need to look, what other students we have to identify, and where we need to really make sure that we look at what else is going on with the student. We have the Fanta's and Pennell, which is more of the diagnostic reading assessment, which we administer K through 5. And it really tells us where the student is struggling in the area of reading, so where we really should be targeting our intervention. We also take into account, when it comes to math, there are math interim assessments, which are administered three times a year. Those are based on our curriculum here at Bethlehem, and it shows us where the students are performing compared to their peers here at Bethlehem. It also, we also take into account the classroom assessments, so what the teachers are doing day in and day out, the information that they have about how their students are performing within their class. And then finally, we take a look at how the students performed in the New York State assessments, and obviously that's for those kids, 3 through 5.
So, we begin in the fall after the AIMS Web test is administered, and we begin with our small data team. And we first meet with them to determine, sort of reduce the number of children that we'll be talking about when we meet with grade-level teams. One of the things that the AIMS Web's reports provides for us is a chart that looks like this. And you can't see the names of the children, and that's, they're fictitious, and that's, it's irrelevant. What I really want you to see is the band of colors. So, children are, are ranked from highest performing to lowest performing in any particular skill area that we administer a test for. So, what we're really looking at is the children who are in the red band and the yellow band. Those are the children that we think are most at risk. We then meet with the teachers in all of the grade levels. We meet with teachers one, one grade level at a time. We begin with children that we have taken the names from the AIMS Web, from the yellow and the red bands, and we talk about where those children were last year and where they currently are. We talk with teachers about how they're doing in the classroom, what additional assessments and information they might have as we make decisions about what type of intervention they might need. At the very basic level, when a child is first identified, they will receive tier one, tier one intervention. And tier one intervention is provided at the classroom level by the classroom teacher. That teacher will look to see what specific area that child is having difficulty with, and will provide differentiated instruction that zeroes in on exactly what that child's need is. They make accommodations and modifications in order to meet the needs of those children in tier one. If a child is not successful in tier one, we take a look at what their test scores look like, and we will move them into tier two if necessary. Tier two means pull-out instruction by either a reading specialist or a math specialist. At the tier two level, these are groups of three to five students, and they meet usually three times a week for 30 minutes. Again, this is targeted instruction based on the specific need of the child. We group children now by groups rather than a one-size-fits-all approach, which is what we, we have done in the past. And then tier three, those children who aren't making progress in tier two, we then identify children who need additional assistance. We then meet with those children for both reading and math with just one or two children in those groups, and for four or five times each week for 30 minutes. So, you can see how we're moving up from tier one to tier three, given the needs of the child. Two of the major ways that RTI has changed the approach that we take with struggling children is both making sure that we are targeting instruction based on the need of the child. Like I said in the past, we've done a one-size-fits-all, which has really been a supplemental piece to what's happening into the classroom. And now it's a much more targeted, focused approach. And the other piece that we're doing is what we call progress monitoring, which is that we're assessing children on a regular basis. If a child is in tier one, tier two, or tier three, they're required to be progress monitored or assessed every other week. So, we want to assess to make sure the instruction is actually working. If the instruction isn't working, we go back to the table and take a look and see what kind of, how we need to change that instruction. This part of the process lasts usually about 17 to 18 weeks. The instruction, according to the law, needs to be, of course, differentiated based on the student needs. It needs to be in line with the New York State standards and the Common Core, and of course, it needs to be research-based. We then, seven to eight weeks into that process, we then have a small data team review, which we actually did this morning. And I'm really happy to say that the, the meeting was great. We were able to review children in both remedial reading and math. We talked about children who are making tremendous progress, as well as those children who were not making progress. We talked about actually releasing a few children from the process, which is great. That's the goal. And we also talked about increasing tiers for a couple of kids, so moving kids from tier two to tier three. And there's one child who is going to be referred for special ed. So, as Kathleen said, the intent of the, one of the intents of the whole program is to reduce the number of referrals for special ed. So, we can see after our meeting today that actually that is working. After three years of implementing this, we're, we're actually seeing those And next, Jackie Gaffney, our social worker, is going to talk about how our child study team that has been in existence for many, many years is now interfacing with the RTI process.
Good evening. As, as Heidi mentioned, we've had a child study team in our buildings in all of the years that I've been here, which is numbering 15. That, that child study team in the past really, really functioned as a special ed referral meeting. And with implementation of RTI, the child study team really has taken on a different role. So, what we're really looking at, again, is a student who's experiencing any kind of difficulty. We're drilling down to really get to those root causes of the difficulty academically or socially, and we're targeting interventions to address those needs. The teacher is a key player in this child study team meeting. There's two ways that a child can be brought to the child study team. One is that a teacher is just feeling that a child's not making the progress that they would expect, even if other indicators are showing them performing okay. So, they may come for consultation. And that allows them to come together with a team of colleagues and really have many minds thinking about how to best instruct the students. The other way of the referral process is you have a student who is not making that expected progress. And again, we come together as a team, and we again drill down to look at what the underlying causes are for the, for the student's challenges. If, if we're spot-on, then we have implemented interventions. And as you can see from the chart above, we have success, and that student is receiving tier one interventions in their classroom. If it's a more complex situation, then we may move again to meet with the CST team, and we again review the interventions that we've used. We again drill down to get to the root causes, redefine the plan that we're using and implementing in the classroom, and again, go back and review the data and see how that student does again after a period of time moving through the tiers. Other teachers may become involved in this process. If, after implementing tier two interventions, a student continues to struggle again over a period of time, we come back and we really talk about, is there a need for a referral to special education? Because with all the minds at the table, there are pieces to what's going on with this child that we really can't fully explain through the resources that we have available to us. And at that point, the referral to special education would happen. And with that, I will turn this over to Kim McColl, who is a reading specialist at Slingerlands Elementary. And she's going to explain what the reading program looks like through RTI at Slingerlands.
So, how has this changed what I do in the reading room? I've been teaching for 28 years now. 10 of them were in the classroom. In the last 18 years, I've been really lucky to be here at Slingerlands as a reading specialist. During my career, I've seen lots of changes with reading in philosophy and in curriculum. But I can honestly say that with the RTI model, I, I really feel that I'm providing the best reading instruction that I ever have. Prior to the RTI model, my intervention operated on the premise that I would provide a double dose to, of reading instruction to the kids that I serviced. I would try to connect the best that I could to what skills were being taught in the classroom, what strategies were being taught, and even content. But as I reflect on that, I realize what I was actually doing was supporting the kids with their reading instruction as opposed to actually remediating their reading, their reading. Now with the RTI process, the focus is on addressing those most foundational skills that the children are lacking, and then build from there. My instruction is now much more narrow in its scope as far as what I target on a day-to-day basis, instead of approaching reading as a whole, whole process. A good example also is that we provide instruction to kindergarteners who are not even reading yet. They begin school with maybe some weak skills in their knowledge of letters and sounds, and we try to build that, those foundational skills so that we do not have the development of reading problems. I can liken what I do now to how maybe a coach would teach, teach his athletes to play basketball. Initially, he would spend his time getting them to be able to dribble the ball and shoot the ball and pass the ball before he would even think of putting them in a game. Well, if he did, you can imagine the kind of game that would occur. Well, it's the same with young readers. Until they can blend their letters and they have some sight word knowledge, the reading that they will do will be very fragmented. And anyone who's read with, with a struggling reader knows what that sounds like. And it doesn't feel good to the reader at all. RTI is in its very beginning stages here at Bethlehem. And I don't have any hard data to say that it is better than what we've done in the past, but I can say that I see my, my students making much greater progress, and I am embracing the model. And I feel that we've made some really positive changes.
I just wanted to touch on a few of the successes that we've had in implementing this model. In general, it's a smoother and more efficient process. We're getting to kids sooner. And one thing that we didn't mention earlier is that through this process and through the benchmarking that we do do throughout the year, it provides us an opportunity to have several sets of eyes on every child in the building. And I think that's important to celebrate those children that are having great success and also be able to identify early on those students who are struggling. It has also, and I want to commend the board and thank them for increasing our ability to serve struggling math students. In the past year, with the increases in staffing that occurred, we've been able to reach our first graders. So, that has been a real benefit to this program. It has meant changes to the CST process overall. And while we can point to some challenges with that, because there's challenges with anything that we do that's new, the changes to the CST process have also allowed us to dovetail it with other processes we have and really make sure that we're providing good supports to students on a continuum and continuously. And last but not least, again, it provides us with a more focused process of identifying children when they're beginning to struggle, targeting, targeting our instruction and our efforts towards what they need and helping them to be successful, which means improved outcomes for all.
And Heidi is going to talk about the challenges.
So, and it's great that we've had so many successes in the short time that we have implemented this. But for sure, we still face some challenges. Number one being is a shift in our thinking about how we support struggling students. And this is such a simple sentence that really means so very much. As we have changed our process over the years, it, it's been challenging for people to sort of change with the process. Change is hard. Change is hard. People are used to coming to child study team when we have a concern about a child. We make a referral to special ed. We do an evaluation, and sometimes the child receives services as a result of that. But now we're spending a lot more time thinking about what that child needs and providing intervention so we don't head down that path. But shifting that paradigm has been really difficult, and it's something that we'll continue to work on. Another challenge that we have is we're still working on making this a more fluid process with children moving in and out of the different tiers. This sometimes is a challenge because we have the staffing that we have. We are looking to have a process where children can move in and out. We identified some children this morning, and we have a plan to be able to move those children in and out. But we can't make huge shifts because Kim's, staffing is Kim's staffing. This is what we have. This is her schedule. So, we hope to maybe shift that in the future as we continue to make changes. And the last one is that we've been unable to anticipate staffing based on the needs of students who have entered Slingerlands after school has started. This has not only been a challenge for Slingerlands this year, but I know it's been a challenge for some of our other buildings. We've had a huge influx of children that have come after school has started, and so many of those children received intervention where they went to school before. And our staffing is sort of full with what we predicted from the previous year. And so, we've had trouble sort of squeezing all of that into work. So, that's been one of our challenges as well. But as I said when we first started out, that the success of our children is the most important thing that we do in, in every school, and especially at the elementary level. We're all about early intervention and doing everything we can to make sure a child's primary years as they head into middle school are as successful as they can be, so that they have those skills so that they can be successful as they move into high school and beyond. We're all about children, and we want to leave you remembering that. We have just a couple of little short- We have just a couple of little short video clips, and we're going to just hit play on that, and we'll finish up with that, so enjoy some of the scenes from what Kim does with some of her kids in the remedial classroom.
There's no sound that goes with that part.
I'm prepping them before they come into the classroom, presetting them as to what skills they'll be taught when they come in the door. In the next frame, you'll see they're hopping through hula hoops, breaking down words because they're "chop" as they hop. They're doing some brain warm-ups here, and here's some sightword skills we're doing. We do singing and chanting and jumping and all sorts of things with the sightwords. Here's a game we're playing with sightwords. They're actually bowling sightwords and making words with tiles, breaking words apart, putting them together. And before they leave, then I do a quick little assessment, and this one is on sightwords, the ones that we covered during the class.
And that just kind of sums it up. The smile on the child's face to have had success during the RTI reading intervention that she received that day, and it really is priceless. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Lynn.
How have the new learning standards affected what you're doing in the intervention programs?
Well, I think as we've implemented the standards K-5, certainly there's more rigor in our classroom programs, and that has had an impact on children who have been identified, not identified for special ed, but identified for additional assistance. Children who maybe came into school with less preparations than other children who maybe attended preschool, and so sometimes there's that gap, but our kids catch up pretty quickly.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes, go ahead.
First, thank you. That was great. I love this program. I think this is one of the reasons, you know, Bethlehem is so exceptional. I have a couple of questions. One is, how do you do the assessment on that behavior side of things?
I think when we talk about the multidisciplinary team that comes together, we, again, we rely on the professionals that we have available to us in the building. So we are fortunate that we have psychologists, social work, and guidance in our building, and we also have our nursing staff. So what we do in that situation is we really look at, again, drilling down what could be the underlying causes for that behavior. Oftentimes, what we find is that there may be an underlying learning challenge that the student is having, and that is impacting how they're behaving at any given time. So we may, you know, do assessments based on what our observations are telling us and the information that we learn through meeting together as a collective team. Our nurse is also a critical part of that team because she can also identify whether there were any early life experiences, developmental experiences, that may be impacting a child's ability to learn. So, again, it's really by bringing all those people together who have that expertise and then sharing that knowledge as a group.
I'm also going to just touch a little bit on the behavior piece. We certainly also collect data. We try different types of intervention strategies within the classroom and really keep track. Has this worked? Has this not worked? We, you know, implement positive behavior plans, positive strategies, and different types of modifications within the classroom. And we, you know, I know as a psychologist, I support the CST team in collecting data and what, how to put that all together and put it into pretty graphs and charts to see if what we're trying with the kids behaviorally is actually working.
And another question I have is, you kind of mentioned the resource issue at the end, and it sounds like one of the big challenges with respect to the resources is the unknown of kind of new kids moving in the district. We put some money in the budget last year to add to this program in the math area. I mean, is this an area where, you know, you really, your team is not big enough, and you know that going in, and the added challenge of kids coming into the school, you know, that you don't anticipate? I mean, is that a routine event?
No, it's been a challenge this year. I don't think that we have, since I've been here, have ever been faced with quite as many children as we have this year who have come in who have needed additional intervention that we haven't budgeted or staffed for ahead of time. And I think this is probably true in some of the other buildings as well this year. So how do you plan for that? I don't know, but we're trying to do the very best job that we can with providing everybody with the intervention that they need in order to accommodate that. Thinking way back to really when I was first here, is we probably provided a lot more early intervention during those times, and as budget years became more and more difficult, those are many of the pieces that got cut over time. And so we're now at the point where we're trying to rebuild that piece again, as we're seeing how effective that early intervention piece is. And I think we're still a little bit new in the process, that we don't have quite the data that we have. I have a gut feeling about it, that we for sure have done less referrals than we have done in the past, but we don't have hard data quite yet on it. I would hope that maybe next year or the year after, we will be able to provide that for you.
And you have kindergartners, we have kindergarteners down to that level at every school that's doing this?
Yeah, so we have a reading specialist in each school, and so Kim works with every single kindergarten class for 30 minutes a day. Did I say that right? And we've done that for quite a few years, which is great because our goal is to prevent those kindergarteners from ever entering remedial reading.
Right. But math, too? We do math at kindergarten?
This is the first year, actually, we've gone below second grade, so we're excited to be providing intervention for first grade. For sure, the thought is early intervention is where we need to be at for both reading and math.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
Again, thank you very, thank you very much for the presentation, and we have a couple eagle pens for you, as the presenters to the board.
Thank you. This was really helpful. It was really good.
I usually let everybody get to start, but I'll start this time. On November 10th, here at Someone's Elementary, there was a veterans' celebration which was put on by Ms. Becker's class. It was phenomenal, and she does it every year, and this actually will be her last year. She's already submitted her retirement effective in the middle of January or whatever, but I want to thank her for the years of service and doing that for the veterans, and it was a great speech by a gentleman who serves at the Air National Guard, and he did a presentation, and he goes over to Iceland as part of his duties, and he had a nice slideshow that the students, you could just see were in awe about it, and, you know, it was nice that he, she, he was able to engage the students and explain to them some of the responsibilities that our servicemen do and women do for us, so I want to thank her for that.
Yeah, I regret not, this is probably the first year I haven't been able to attend it, and I really regret missing it because it's always an excellent program, and I just hope that there's another staff member at Slingerlands that will pick up the slack on that and do it, because I think it's important, you know, for the students especially, to, you know, have that relationship or have an understanding of veterans and what they've done, you know, for this country.
I attended SUNY diversity conference for the SUNY system. I presented a session there, but I also got to attend a keynote by a woman named Daryl Smith, and her work and her publications and her consulting work is in developing what she calls an imperative for building and evaluating the capacity for working and living in an increasingly diverse environment. And so as we go forward in thinking about strategic planning, I found a lot of her work, although she was talking about higher education, really we should consider in K-12. And she was saying, just regardless of your current living context, increasingly, our students will be called to be part of a more diverse workplace. And she talked about not just numbers, but the whole idea about bringing diverse ideas into, for example, a corporate environment. She used two examples. One, she said they opened a major health and beauty chain in LA called OSCO, and "osco" in Spanish apparently means disgusting. And so the store closed because they didn't have someone at the table thinking about opening it there who spoke Spanish. And then she also said the "nova car," I guess apparently they have a car called Nova, but in Italian, that means no-go. And so the Italian sale, the sales in Europe plummeted. So the whole idea of kids, our students, having to work in diverse environments, having to work with their diverse perspectives at the table is going to be something that we, is going to be needed in the future, and just it struck several chords with me. And she also was very effective at comparing diversity, commitment to diversity, with commitment to technology. And she was saying, for example, when the server goes down, we have someone who addresses it. So what happens when diversity goes down? And how we fund and think about these issues, it just made me think quite a bit, and I would like just, when we think about strategic planning in the future, I'm going to bring that to the table. And I thank Mike Cooper for telling me about the conference, so that's it.
Thanks. Anyone else? No?
I don't think we mentioned the big wins. Did we have girls soccer and boys volleyball? Did we mention that?
I think it did.
We did? Okay. Just want to make sure they get their credit because they both did really well.
And he said he was going to bring them to the next board meeting.
This is also American Education Week. At the middle school, they're showcasing the bridge building operations, which is always very fun, and Hammagrail always extends a nice welcome to all the parents for this week, so appreciate that. And also, I know the Lab School was at Hammagrail doing a whole thing on recycling and sustainability. It was a big hit. Lots of information came home, so the Lab School, great, great effort on their behalf. I think they do it every year, but I think this year, they've kind of fine-tuned it a little bit, so.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that about the recycling. This past Saturday at the farmer's market, they did a textile recycling, and when I got there, probably about 12:15 or so, they had actually filled up the first truck, and they had to go and get another truck to.
Yeah, I got there like right at the end, and it was just tons of stuff.
Great to see the community participation in that. All right, next is a presentation. We'll have Judith Keo, our chief business officer, do a presentation to the board explaining what the veterans' tax exemption would be and possible impact. And as previously mentioned, we will be having a public hearing on these issues, and I'll go into detail when the meetings are going to be on that and the other exemptions we're considering before the board.
This exemption is something, can you hear me if I don't bring the microphone up?
Microphone, please.
This exemption is something that has been around for many years, since about 1984, but it has only been available to community members on the January property tax bills. What has changed is as of the end of December 2013, the state amended this law and made it available to school boards to consider whether or not it was something that they wanted to make available. If this is something that is chosen by the school, it also would affect the library taxes as well. The program eligibility is something where an application gets submitted into the town assessor's office, and it is the assessor who reviews the application and makes a determination whether the service qualifies for the veterans' exemptions. And there are several tiers of benefit associated with that. There are some family members that might be eligible as well. So for instance, if you have a family that's lost a loved one in active service, there's a supplemental or a benefit that is available to them as well. It is similar to the STAR exemption in that it is limited to your primary residence only, and by statute, there is a cap of $240,000. And the exemptions increase depending on your situation. So for instance, the floor is a 15% exemption for serving in a time of war with one of the armed forces. If you've actually been in a combat zone, the benefit increases to up to 25%, and then if you've actually had a service-connected disability, you get another 50% on top of that. Any of the exemption amounts are subject to being adjusted by whatever the equalization rate happens to be, as you might have recalled from prior budget conversations when we've done the tax rate-setting process. We always have to factor in the varying equalization rates between the community. Right now, both Bethlehem and New Scotland are at 100%, so whatever the exemption amount is, is what would be applied. There is an order to which these exemptions get applied to your home. The veterans' exemption gets applied first, and then, assuming there's sufficient value left, the STAR exemption would be applied to that. That's an important distinction for schools that makes it a little bit unique with this program, because there's a possibility, depending on the value of the home and the amount of the exemption, it could result in the STAR aid that comes to the school being reduced. So an important consideration as well.
Judy, before you go on, can we just get clarification on the number-one item? It's not the value of the house that's limited to $240,000, it's the exemption amount?
No, it's the value of the house. So because those percentages are applied to the value of the house.
So a house assessed at $300,000 wouldn't be eligible?
It would be eligible, but only up to the first $240,000 of value on the house.
Okay.
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 The basic exemption that is part of the statute, if you take 15% of that $240,000 home, the maximum benefit would be $12,000. If you qualify for the next tier because you've had combat service, it adds an additional 10%. So the value of the exemption is 12,000 plus the 8,000, giving you a $20,000 maximum exemption. If you have a disability and get an additional 50% benefit, you would then go up to potentially a $60,000 exemption amount. So you can go from a low of 12,000 up to the maximum. If you look below the orange fields, those are what is currently in place for both the town of Bethlehem and the town of New Scotland. So the maximum amount that you can get by statute is the 36 plus the 24 plus the 120. So the highest value of this exemption is $180,000, okay? Because this is newly available to school districts, there's been a lot of discussion with various districts throughout the state. The only districts that we're aware of locally that have adopted this at the basic exemption level, highlighted in blue, would be Gilderland, Green Island, and Burnox Westerlo. Mahanesson has adopted an even lower benefit that's available. The state sets two levels below what they call the basic level. The lowest tier is the $6,000, $4,000, and $20,000 benefits. They offer another alternative. This is like the biggest à la carte menu you could imagine in terms of your choices with setting these limits, but you also have the 9, 6, and 30 option that is available. Now, if you look to the current exemption amounts that are on the books for the town of Bethlehem and the town of New Scotland, the almost $43 million for Bethlehem and close to $3 million for New Scotland reflects the maximum amounts that are available. So if you're going back to this slide, the orange highlights, that's what's reflected within these numbers for each of the towns. So there are approximately 1,000 exemptions at the town and 83 in New Scotland. It's a relatively small percentage of the overall assessment values, about 1.5% in both communities. If you do simple math, the average is about a $43,000 exemption in Bethlehem and $34,000 in New Scotland. So some will be lower, some will be higher. It's all a factor of which degree of exemption are they entitled to.
Judy, another question. And those are strictly the school district properties within the town of Bethlehem and the town of New Scotland?
These are just within the town of Bethlehem, yes.
No, but within our district, they're not.
I'm sorry, yes, within the Bethlehem Central School District, within the towns of Bethlehem and New Scotland. and New Scotland.
I have a question. Could you go back to that slide for a second? When you say number of exemptions, does that equal number of people?
No, because one person might have three different exemptions.
Thank you.
Okay, so it's a non-duplicated number.
It's the additive thing that you showed before.
A duplicated number of recipients.
Okay, thank you.
Now, these exemptions do not have any impact to the district in terms of the tax levy that is established by the board and voted on by the community. The tax levy is set in accordance with the tax cap. So this doesn't mean a difference to the district at all in terms of the amount of money that we would collect based on the budget process. What it means is if you have veterans who then become eligible for this benefit at the school level, it means the other taxpayers will be funding, that benefit to them is going to be paid for by the other members of the community. So what happens? So say we were to take the full $43 million and lower the overall assessed values, what that means is that the tax rate goes up. So everybody else would be paying a higher tax rate. The veterans, too, would be paying a higher tax rate, but because they have the value of the exemption, their tax bill would be considerably lower, again, depending on what level might be approved. So I want to give you a quick look of what this looks like from a veteran's perspective, and then also potentially from everybody else's perspective who wouldn't be eligible for this. If you look at the minimum exemption amount of $12,000, and I'm noting this tax rate on the bottom as an adjusted tax rate. If you pull out your bill from last fall, this number is not going to match. What I did was I lowered the assessed values by the maximum assessed values that is on the books for the town currently, and then calculated what that rate would look like, and then applied it to these varying exemption amounts. So you would go from perhaps a low of about $268 coming off of the veterans' tax bill if they had the lowest level at 12,000, up to a high if they had the full 180,000 of about a $4,000 benefit. And remember, these benefits then apply to every single tax year going forward. So if you look to the average values for either New Scotland or Bethlehem, you can see it's around the $700 or $900 level. And again, that's if you're at the maximum level. If you look at what it means to the rates at the maximum level, our school and library tax rates would have increased about 34 cents per thousand, which is the equivalent of about 1.55% additional taxes. So where, you know, say you approve a levy amount of 3%, the effective tax rate for the people who are now absorbing this would go up to about 4.55%. So that shift would be most noticeable in the first year that this would be in place. If your home is assessed at 250,000, it would mean an impact of about $85,000, assuming no other changes in the overall assessed value for the community. If you were to adopt at the basic exemption amount, it would be less than that. I would estimate approximately half, so around $42 would be the impact for a $250,000 home.
Judy, if you went below like what Mahanison did, then that would be even almost cutting that in half as well.
Even lower. The lower the exemption amount, the less of the impact that would be experienced by the non-qualifying taxpayers. So the focus of the public hearing when we have on this is really to answer the question of, clearly, everybody values the service of our veterans. We're very appreciative of that. What we need to consider is, is there support within the community that says, yes, we want you to adopt this, and we are willing to absorb this additional impact on our tax rates in order to fund that level of benefit? If it is approved by the board, if you are a veteran that has already been approved by either the town of Bethlehem or New Scotland for this, you don't need to do anything else because it will automatically flow through at the touch of a button almost for the school tax bills. If it is a new exemption application, that would have to be filed by March 1st. That's what's called the taxable status date. It triggers the effective date for these benefits, and that would be in place then either for the September 2015 tax bills or the January 2016 tax bills. There's nothing magical about March 1st, 2015. This is now part of the law, so this is something that can be implemented at any of the approved levels at any time in the future as well. So it's here, and it doesn't appear to be going anywhere. The unknown that we need to consider is how many new applications might there be, because this is something, as it relates to the school taxes, becomes a considerable benefit, and that could prompt additional applications coming in. We also don't know how many might impact the STAR aid for the district. So I have not factored any estimates into these preliminary calculations based on those factors. I just wanted to mention so that you were aware.
That would be one of the very important things for the board to consider, just because the way that it comes off with the exemptions are applied before the STAR. When the governor and the legislature approved this, they had to understand that if the exemptions are taken off first, and then now there's no longer a need for a STAR reduction, that means the school district's aid will be reduced, and the state will keep that money for themselves instead of funding this initiative. It is unfortunate that they're doing a tax shift, but that's why I think as a board, we talked about the need for a public hearing, because this is going to be a difficult decision point, especially at the maximum, when you're looking at a potential shift of an additional 1.5 or greater or just a little bit less tax to the general populace for the cost of the exemption. And then you also have to consider the concept of the land conservation easement at the same time. Both of those are shifts, so that's why they're being done concurrently.
And Judy, could you clarify on, how does it impact when we do a tax cap calculation? I mean, is it taken out of the formula? Is there a way that we aren't going to be impacted? Say you were to do your, our tax cap calculation, and it said that, you know, we could go 2.5%. Is that 1.5% shift if we opted for that?
The tax cap calculation gives you a percentage that you can increase your overall levy by.
Right.
Remember, the tax rates are affected by equalization rates. They're affected by either growth or reduction in the overall assessment. So usually, your tax rate does not match the amount of your levy increase. So the levy increase is going to be done in accordance with the formula from the state for the tax cap. That number is what it is. It is not affected by the amount of these exemptions.
So it will not affect the tax cap whatsoever?
It will not affect the tax cap calculation. What it affects is the rate that's paid. So again, if you adopt a budget, say you adopt it with 2% because you're then reducing the overall assessed value, that 2% becomes a higher number, 3.5% potentially.
But I believe in the tax cap calculation, there is a, one of the, the formula, the formula deals with increase in property values and whatnot. So how does it work when we're taking property values out of the equation?
That factor that you're referring to is designed to gauge what they call the brick and mortar growth within the community. So that's a figure that comes to us from the state, and it's based on economic development and growth within the community. So this factor, I don't believe, would be factored into those calculations at all. And that's been relatively slight as well. Remember, it was about 0.41% in the last round of calculations.
Yeah, join.
I know we don't know what the impact would be on the STAR aid, but is there a range? Is there, is it, I mean, can you give us a ballpark of what that impact would be?
The STAR benefit, the value of it, has in fact been declining over the years based on changes in the state's formula. If you recall, I think it was about two years ago, they limited it to no more than an increase of 2% a year based on the benefit amount from the prior year. So it is a relatively lower number, and on one of my pages of notes, I have the figure. Just one second. I believe it was around $600 would be the STAR benefit on a single parcel.
No, but Judy, I think what she was asking is what could be the potential impact to the district in loss of STAR aid? That can't be calculated at this point, but for, hopefully, try to give a ballpark for the public hearing.
Or even a range, you know?
Yeah. I would need to really drill down into the data that the town has on their parcels so I could get a sense. Part of it depends on what level might be adopted. If you're at the lower level, chances are it's not going to touch the STAR aid because most, you know, if you look at the average value of homes, it's in the upper twos.
Right.
You know, 260, 270. So if you're adopting an exemption that's down around, you know, 10,000, it wouldn't be a factor. If you go to the maximum level, that's when you're at a greater risk for a STAR impact.
Right.
Anyone else, any questions for Judy?
So next up is the public hearing, and then a decision to either adopt at this point, at what level, or choose to wait.
Although the presentation says December 3rd, we're going to be adjusting that. President Downey, I wrote it down for him, but he'll announce that at the end.
I do have one question. If we pass one level, I mean, if we were to pass it, and you passed a lower level, could we, you know, modify that in the future, or do what we do now is forever?
Yes. You could always come back and revisit it.
Because I think there are a lot of unknowns. We don't really know the total impact, and I think that's one of the issues.
It might be that the board might consider, if it considers it at all, the very lowest to see what the impact, excuse me, what the impact is, and then you could always come back and reevaluate it at a different time. I think that's what Mahanison was trying to do.
And Judy, also, with the exemption, do we have to pass it all, even at the lower level, or could you say, you know, the disability is the only one we would want to be able to offer to someone who may be, have a veteran's disability?
Through my survey of several assessors, the consensus is, is you have to pass all three levels. You can't select one and not the others. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Judy, can you close out of that, please?
At this time, the board would take any comments from anyone here that has an, would like to address the board on an, on an agenda item. If you come up to the microphone and announce yourself, we'd be videotaped for the public to be able to see the meeting.
Good evening. I'm Samuel Spitzberg, SPI, TZ, Beazin Bravo, ERG. Just one question with regard to the rescheduled date for the veterans' exemption and conservation easement conversation. Are we looking at now Friday, December 19?
It would be a Wednesday, Wednesday, December 17th.
Okay, I thought I.
Yeah, we might have misspoke, but it's a Wednesday.
Thank you.
No problem.
The next, the next board meeting?
Well, to the board.
That is all.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on, item number eight, finance. Finance, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items A through D.
Some of, second.
That's just that.
Oh, okay. That's a first and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I did on D because it wasn't the typical format. It is recommended the board, just as the Board of Elections accepted, you know, these hourly rates for 2014, 15. And since we haven't done it yet, you know, it's kind of speaking as if they're already done before we're actually acting on it. It's just strange wording, but then when I looked at it, it just had a list of people and an increase in the hour, but it had nothing, no information about rates. Now, I'm assuming because there, an extra hour is being added, that they'd be getting paid more, but it just didn't say, you know, indicate what the rate was. So in a sense, we're not really acting on the rates. You understand?
Right, right. I agree with you, Lynn. It was just a listing of the staff that were being paid, the number of hours, and then I think there was some additional training hours or prep hours or something.
Right, but it was just the time.
Time. There was no rate associated or on the sheet that we received.
Brittany, can you, in that, in that she, was that the rate that was approved at the organizational meeting for Proctor?
There was a cover letter, I think that was with two people, I think, still at the same time. So there was a cover letter from Mr. Landry marking what the different rates were, and I felt that that was added, but I didn't see.
No, we didn't get that.
No, that was, that was.
We can have it for the next meeting if you want to.
Yeah, if we could, I would just, I'd rather have it.
Yeah.
Just make a motion to remove D at this time.
I'll do that.
And pull that, and we'll put it on the next agenda.
We have a motion to remove item D from.
Right, to hold till the next meeting. Second.
Second, all in favor of removing item D?
Aye.
Okay.
Just a discussion. I did notice a number of more than usual issues with purchase orders, and I assume that we're putting in place in the reports that we're taking care of that. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion on A through C? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item number nine, professional personnel, is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following instructional staff action items A through I?
Some of, second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item number 10, support personnel, is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items A and B?
Some of.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion?
Just to recognize Paul Spagnolo for his 27 years of service to the district, retiring. I mean, that's, that's a long time.
That is.
Appreciate that.
Yep. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Correspondence for action, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following correspondence action items A. It says A and C, but they're A through C.
Yes, C, just for the board. We had a late arrival that through communication from John Castella in regards to the turkey trot and the fireworks that were started two years ago. He had a discussion with me, but he forgot to put through the paperwork. So we had this come in just a day ago. It is something that the board has approved over the past two years, so I just wanted to make sure that it was all above board before the official event.
Some of.
That's a first, second. Any discussion? I would just like to thank our town for doing the fire, for the fireworks. I know it's well attended by the community, and it has become a community event on Thanksgiving Eve.
Okay, the curriculum changes. I mean, usually, you have a little bit of an explanation of them. It's just kind of here. They were listed on the portal. Right, they were, they were all listed. I guess I don't have any questions because I don't have them in front of me here, you know, to see.
Yeah, I don't, I know Scott's here if you have a particular question.
I know some art, there were some new courses. It eliminated some of the ones that the enrollment was down on.
Well, yeah, I can probably just give you a quick summary. The art changes were essentially looking at consolidating some classes and changing some things, because what they were finding, a lot of the art classes were, you know, might have had 12 or 13 or 14 students selected, so they didn't run. And part of that was they were almost competing with each other. So that was one of the changes in looking at which ones are stronger and how to combine some of those. The studio art one is proposed, it's one of the new options that the state is giving with a media arts component in lieu of studio art. And so that was the curriculum change for that. Actually, Melanie Painter is working with the state ed on the development of that curriculum. So that'll be, instead of students having just studio art as an option for that requirement, there'll be a media arts in, that meets that same requirement for mostly ninth grade students take that. So that was the major art changes. The math changes were, we're continuing some changes based on the Common Core implementation. That's moving up. Obviously, we have geometry this year. And then the computer science proposal was one that we had the grant in conjunction with Siena, and we got through the National Science Foundation. So that is a multi-year process that we hope to begin next fall. Siena's working with one other, a private school currently, in implementing that program, and we would be working with them in the spring to develop, implement their computer science course in training with our teacher. science course in training with our teacher over the summer and for fall of next year.
And would that eventually lead to, like, an AP computer program course?
This course actually will, if students choose, will grant them Siena College credit for this course, but eventually, we would like to see maybe a two-year option or semester options, and there is an option down the road for AP computer science, but this will give students Siena College credit if they wish to.
All right. And then, I think the other thing, because that's one I had a question on, but also the Spanish, eliminating Spanish four because, again, of low enrollment?
It wasn't really eliminating. They're restructuring in the past for languages. We've had different tracks. We've had B tracks and variations of that, and a lot of the students were waiting until junior year to sit for what now is the low checkpoint in lieu of the Regents exam. And what the language department has been finding is that most of the students who have requested to take the Regents at the end of their second year, their 10th grade year, are being quite successful. So, instead of making them wait until their junior year in this three-year track, the proposal is to actually have students take at the end of their sophomore year, which hopefully will allow them to continue on maybe, or look at another option for language. We have some language electives that will oftentimes go under, and they're under-enrolled, so we don't run them, thinking that some of those students may opt into those other programs or the other electives.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay. Any other, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Now, at this time, the board would recognize anyone who would like to address us on a non-agenda item. If you're none, we'll move on. Okay, future meetings, we've got some changes from what's on our website, but we'll make sure everything is updated. Wednesday, December 3rd, we'll have a presentation on the land conservation easement, potential exemption, that the board would be discussing. And then, and that will be at the high school on December 3rd at 7:00 p.m. Wednesday, December 17th, we'll have a public hearing on both the veterans exemption and the land conservation easement exemption, and that will be, we'll start that at 6:30 to give ourselves enough time, that may be a long night, but we'll begin 6:30, and the meeting will follow the public hearing-
At the high school.
-at the high school. And that will be at the high school. And then, our next meeting after that will be January 7th, and then that's when we'll be at Hammock Grill. And thank you, Dave, for being accommodating and switching that.
Can I ask a quick, so where is the substation discussion on that? I lost that one.
The substation discussion-
That's why we're moving to December 3rd.
I sort of had that, but I will have to most likely leave sometime on the night of the 3rd.
Okay, got it, got it. Sorry.
And also encouraging our community to go and voice their opinion on it, either for or against that.
I need all board members to sign the tax collection report.
Okay. And could I just ask again, Ms. Barrett, every, the day of every meeting, could you send a reminder to us what time the meeting starts and where we're supposed to go? Thank you, just till we get through to the new year. Thank you.
And we have no need to go back into executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sub move.
That's a first and a second. All in favor? Aye. We are now adjourned. Pig students, if you'd come up and sign out, please, and we can sign any paperwork that you need.